Today, we thank you for the opportunity to come here and gather and to make decisions that will impact our lives, Lord. Lord, never let us forget the great blessings that we've received from you through the individuals that have preceded us, that have set forth a system that we have here today that allows us for this interaction and this input and direction into our, quote, "civil lives." Lord, we thank you for all that you've done. We thank you for those that have gathered here with us. And Father, we ask you to be with us as we move forward. And above all, Lord, please forgive us of our sins. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas life, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Now the time is 1:33. We do have a quorum. We will call this special meeting of the Commissioners Court to order. And first up is citizens' comments. No citizens' comments. And so item one is consider and take action to receive and provide information, evaluate demographics, and take possible action regarding redistricting of Henderson County political boundaries. Court, as you know, on October 20th, we spent about six and a half, I think, seven hours, along with our Elections Administrator, County Clerk, and our two party chairs in evaluating and developing the maps for redistricting. Since then, in the communications that we've had over email, of course, we had about two weeks, 16 days cut out from under us in the time that we have to develop these maps. Given the memo from the Secretary of State's office, if no one is aware, everyone was expecting a December 2 deadline, which got moved up to November 13. And given that, we've had a lot, or I have had a lot of interaction with the attorneys to be sure that we have the information in place that we discussed as our proposal. This is the maps we will end up looking at today are the proposals of which we had discussions on, on the 20th. And we have a good, complete set of the Commissioners Court boundaries, which are on display here and we'll put up top before long. But I want to thank everyone across the board that has been a part of this process because, honestly, this is the third redistricting that I have been through. And normally, these processes take up to two months. Well, here we are, putting this thing together just in our meeting time, in about 10 to 12 hours. Now, we made such a great headway during that seven-hour meeting that really made this possible. And I appreciate the party chairs and the Elections Division and the Commissioners Court members for working so well together during that time of understanding that we have legal criteria that has to be met. And I believe these maps that we're going to look over again before we set a proposal on them. But I'd like to hear if there's anyone that would like to speak toward the process at this moment before we start going through them?
I would just, it went really well. I was thinking it was going to be so hard and so long, but everybody did really well together, and I appreciate being a part of the team.
Anyone else?
Two things. One, I appreciate being a part of the process. And two, I think you all did a great job, and you judge as well, as far as being able to move the process forward and listen to everyone that had common to come up with the solution that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Paula? Well, I guess what we'll start with first is the, this is the Commissioner Boundary Precincts. We were actually able to create these from the shape files, or create the depiction that you have here in front of us, from the shape files that were developed during our meeting. Areas of interest, as you know, as we zoom in to them, was the areas inside the loop and how we had to balance the population between 1 and 2 in this region here on the map that you see. And I will, if I am good at this, let me see if I can't turn something on to help us. There. What I've done is I have turned Commissioner 5 off, but this block right here, this is the VTD block that we created, and I believe we named it...
1.
Block 1. Whoops, excuse me. This area here that was formerly in, the majority of it was formerly in Precinct 2. Hi, Dan. That being moved into Commissioner 1. And then we had the balancing between Commissioners 3 and 4, of which we were settling on the FM 317 designation. For those that remember, hopefully it might show up, there was a creek that was the boundary previously and had been the boundary for about 20 years, the two previous ones. But to get the population balance, which is required under the 1965 Voting Rights Act, we adjusted the line up from that creek to FM 317, all the way into where it joins with Highway 317.
315.
No, excuse me, 315, thank you. So, these particular maps feel very comfortable with. Is there any comments or discussion about those? I can show you the, well, we feel pretty comfortable with these. Any comments? These are the ones that are laid out here in front of us. Like I said, we were very fortunate to be able to come to a consensus and agreeance in this particular area here as far as the moving of population. Now, the other discussions that we had, and for those may not remember, again, under the 1965 Voting Rights Act, this is, quote unquote, "constitutionally required" to be as close to equality in population. And these are the ones that we're truly required every 10 years to take into consideration. The attorney stated Wednesday that he would not only be getting us the updated voter tabulation shape files, but he will also get us the demographic changes that back up much of the discussion that we've had here and to be a part of our proposed meeting we hope to have on Friday. Is there any question concerning the Commissioners Court boundaries or input? We can, I think, by doing this, reveal the voter tabulation districts in the area of Commissioner 1. And again, that is, this is the map we created in conjunction with the shape values that we'll end up getting to, but I wanted to show the, excuse me, these areas, how they are depicted in the Commissioners Precinct in 1. Here are the ones in 2. Of course, we had to create a new one up here in the Gumbel City area, and we had to expand out, 2PSS, or what we refer to as Pain Springs South, had to expand it out due to the 5,000 population limit of each voter tabulation district.
Can you go to GPS and PSN?
Okay.
There where the blue and, yeah, should those, should where that blue is, blue and gray, or that blue comes into the pink and gray? You got that one?
That is out in the middle of the lake.
Okay, that's what I was making sure of. I think, I thought that's where it was.
Yes.
Okay.
That is out in the middle of the lake, much as the joining here between, I'll turn this one off where you can see, much as the joining here and, looks like this one little piece of island here is still in Precinct 1. I'm not sure what island that is.
That's where houses are.
Okay.
About four or five houses.
Okay.
And then what about the island that is Peninsula?
Peninsula?
Crossing.
I'm not sure which is, is this over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Zoom out like here. Is that in 1 also?
Yes, that's in 1.
Okay.
That would be in the 1TC or the 2.
Okay.
The 2 VTD. As we were saying, that was the major changes there. When you come over here, and I want to show this to everyone, because this is still based on the shape files that we received last week, which we should, we will be receiving the new shape files Wednesday, that depict here. This set of shape files has the changes that we made in the corner Fincastle box. It has them improperly allocated in the shape files that we have now. That is why this map here is the one that we created in-house and got the information to the attorney correcting what they had proposed in those original shape files. Because as you will see, our intention was not to fold Porter Fincastle into Moore Station. Our intention was to fold it into New York La Rue. And this set of shape files does not depict that. And if you remember the emails over last week, we've said that multiple times. And of course, this is, does have that depiction, the correct depiction. And he said he'll have us those shape files Wednesday. We did have to, I'll move up here into the Chandler area. You'll remember the Chandler voter tabulation district was exceeding the 5,000 population, so we had to split and create a Chandler South, depicted in the 3CS that you see here. Those, we've gone through the Commissioners, we've looked at the voter tabulation, and now as we scroll back, where I can bring this up for everyone to see, in our county, where we have more than four JPs, our county historically has followed the voter tabulation districts to lay out the boundaries of the justice courts. Because as each of us know here, the public may not know, is that when you have a voter tabulation district, it is not permissible to have two types of offices within that same voter tabulation district. So in the areas where we've had to move voter tabulation districts, has played some impact on the justice courts. And I will pull up here that will show, and start here with JP 1, which, as you will see, here in Athens area, it's mainly north of Athens, the only real changes that were depicted with the voter tabulation districts, of course, was here in what we call 1. We discussed 1E here, and an issue has arisen with it, and I wanted to point this out, is that this area here was actually serviced by the Justice of the Precinct 5 originally. Given the location, areas of interest, not only that, if you pull up 5, with the expansion of Pain Springs South and the expansion of 1T or Trinidad, we're actually moving some population into 5. You know, we moved across the spillway with the Trinidad box, trying to get that population off of the 2 box, which we mainly went into the rural river bottom areas, clicking up, and I believe we had some areas. We had to be sure we did not go inside the city limits of 2, because once again, when you have, the same district area cannot be serviced by two different elected officials of it. So that was one area we had to expand in, was because of this expansion here of the area inside the loop of the new VTD that we created, calling 1E, is why the discussion is about putting it into JP 1. You got more population coming in from the west, and it would help balance some to pull population out of that precinct into another one, which incidentally is the smallest precinct, JP Precinct in population-wise. It was some 5,000 below, I believe. JP 1 was 10,000 versus 15,000 on 3, 4, and 5? I believe that's correct.
Yeah, so 2.
So, when you bring in JP 4, you know, we worked, and inside the loop, due to the House District changes, and we had to create several boxes inside the loop or recreate some. I'll show you here, this 4B is a new box designation, and you will see the 1E and the 1. But this 4B location has historically been, or some of the area has been historically in JP 4, which in recent years has had the express responsibility of the hospital for inquests. And since the hospital sits right about here where my cursor is, the, that voter tabulation district here is in Precinct 4 retaining that hospital. And then, of course, our amendments we had in, is that 4A or 4, that's 4, in this location. So none of those, no other changes to 4 that affect the actual boundary. Again, inside 4...
The boundary affected on, we followed the Commissioner boundary on the north side at 317.
Yes.
On JP 4.
Yes. And that way, and because of that, the voter tabulation districts, there. As you can see, when we moved that 317 line up, the voter tabulation district followed that line up with it.
Yeah.
JP 4, JP 3 is, as you can see, Merkison, Brownsboro, Chandler, Chandler Box, Chandler South, and...
Westside.
Westside, which has historically been, as you can see here, 3M, 3B, CCS, and here. Not a lot of change in that depiction. Whoops, excuse me. And Precinct 2 still remains the area up here, Seven Points, Gumbel City, northern Pain Springs and such. Since there was some of the changes we discussed in the Trinidad box, whoops, excuse me. See if I can get it to, there. As I said, this Trinidad box having to, excuse me, district, had to expand, if I can find the spillway. There it is, right here. This was the spillway location when we started, but having to push Trinidad up through this region to pull that over a population in here out is what drove that. Just 4 rims I wanted to overlay in. These are the State House districts, which, of course, they're already set by the legislature. But having them depicted into data that we can use will greatly assist our Elections Department. It'll at least give you a fighting chance. I've kind of gone through this as a, as an overview. Questions, comments, discussion?
I guess the south end of the Trinidad and Malakoff box is part of the south end of District 4, State House District 4?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, it is. As you can see, Malakoff, Trinidad, coming in.
I didn't think you all moved that, so I'm just making sure.
Yes, no, all of that. The House District 4 is depicted in orange, and House District 8 is depicted in blue.
No gators.
So, comments, questions, discussion, you know, we have endeavored to make this as open and involving everyone that we can, but due to these timelines that have been pushed down on us, this is absolutely the, I feel very good about all the work that we've done, and very proud of the way it's come together. Like I said, something that normally is a two-month process, we have been able to condense down with everyone working together. So, comments?
I think our voter tabulation boxes line up better now than they did in the previous years because our District 10 over there, they were all before with the voter tabulation boxes, weren't they?
Yeah, that was actually created after...
After.
We had completed the process in 2011, and it was a, we had completed, and then the State family got theirs completed, and then it was just, from then on, we didn't touch it again. It was something that I, that I, in hindsight, I believe it's something we should have addressed, but we did not. At the time, I didn't think we needed to, but it's, I wasn't as gray then as I am now.
Should make it easier on Election Administrator.
Yeah.
Follow the boundaries a little bit.
You know, we still have the issue, and I'm assuming it's statewide, the, one of the discussion points that really came up, that really made it very clear to me, was that we look at these as voting districts. The party chairs look at these as precincts, and each one of these voter tabulation districts slash precincts require staffing. And for both chairs, thank you all for helping us to see some of that. And then that is what drove some of our consolidation. And actually, we ended up negating the impact slightly because we had to create six, I believe, total new boxes, and was only able to consolidate four due to populations. So, and, populations and the effective House districts. So, comments, thoughts? Paula?
I just have one little thing to look at. I'm 3 on the north side.
Okay, speak up.
I'm 3.
Mm-hmm.
I think we need to move 3 and now just a little bit.
Okay. And remember, this depiction here is our creation. The, when we get in here, let me see, if I do that...
I think it's a screen level, I think we just need to move, and stay consistent with the loop.
Yeah, that was our tip.
That's the city limits, I believe.
That's the city limits now.
But the state issues.
I believe.
Well, yeah. That is a new rule.
They're in different districts.
District 4 follows 19 to the loop, so that little sliver north of the loop there, the greens, is outside, gonna be outside of District 4.
We can move those, even though they'll be in the city, there is some leeway in, in the discussion and some of the discretion of the court, and I believe it states that when an area is not sufficient to meet the minimum criteria to be its own area, even though it's inside of city limits, it can be consolidated. So I'm thinking we can put these into what would is 3N.
3N, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Provide software, it's easier to adjust the state districts and then make a sub-district for the city limits, so I could adjust that later.
That little bit right there would be the same thing?
But this...
Or following 19, following...
Yeah, this is all within the House District 4, so it really doesn't...
Okay. That other side of, that other side of 19 changes. That other side of, that other side of 19 changes.
Yeah, the west side of 19, 14.
That's all I see. Move around to the east side of the loop. I think we're consistent again.
Yep.
And there's not, there were like three voters in that spot, but when we're fixing our boundary line for that box.
Mm-hmm. You talking about, whoops, here in this area?
Yes. It just wouldn't make any.
Well, now, I believe right here, isn't there an apartment complex?
Yeah.
Sitting right here.
It's north. Is it the county road?
Is it north of the county road? I guess it is, yeah, there it is.
It's south of the county road.
Okay, I get it.
Right there where that dirt pile is, right in here.
There's some apartments right in here. There is?
Yep.
Let me see.
Come back down here. Where's the loop at?
Loop, right here. I'm thinking that's.
I think.
Yeah, there's a set of apartments right in here. Right by the road.
Here, let me.
North of that county road?
If I can turn.
There we go.
There we go.
That's the, that's, I think that's here on the north side of that county road.
Now, now this 3721, I believe, is a, I mean, is.
Ain't no road, is it?
No, that's on 721, just goes back in that dead end.
Dead ends.
Okay, is, is that the, is that the road?
That's the boundary.
Okay, so that, that.
That's the current boundary.
I guess it is.
Okay, so they're already outside, outside the city, okay. Okay.
So that there is an apartment.
It's, it is already in 3E.
I was thinking south, I don't know why, but they're all in the north.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's what I remember seeing. You have to add one question.
Yes, sir.
1 and 1E.
Okay.
Population wise, what are those, what is 1 and what is 1E population?
Let's see if I can... Let's see if it depicts it. Population is 761 in, in 1E.
761?
The problems in JP is 1.
And 863 in 1.
Are 1 and 1E both in JP1?
They are both in JP1.
But they're in different commissioner precincts.
They're for permission.
They're both?
They're in the same commissioner.
They're both?
Let's see.
Both commissioner 1.
There is JP there, they're both in JP1.
They're both in commissioner 1.
Let me turn JP. Whoa! Great, what to do. Excuse me, let me do this again. Okay, now, let's try this again. Let me turn JP1 off. All right, so they're both in JP1, and they're both in commissioner 1, and they're both in House District 4.
So why could we not make that all just precinct 1?
See, I think that was, that 1E, we did have that in JP5 and we switched it at the end.
Right.
That's right.
We could have resolved those two at one point.
We could.
And we have 30 precincts that's both in 31.
Would that? But would that, do you agree with that, given the, the technical building and all of that?
That's why we did that, for the JP was not switched.
Yeah, and then we added that to JP1 out of 5.
Of 1 and 1E.
For 5.
Okay.
Make that just 1?
And we make it 1, okay?
It'd be progress. One of those, one of those whole, the fund worker for precinct 1.
They're both in JP1.
I didn't think we are a population on that side. And I don't see a problem with consolidating.
1 is 863, 42, that, that gets us 1624, which is a more viable. Michael?
Yeah?
Commissioner?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Court?
That's good, probably where it should be, we just forgot about it.
Yeah, when we moved that other class.
Last minute, we changed that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just saw that.
Okay. Right now, I've got that action item.
Maps.
And this action item. Would it be more helpful to work from this one at the moment, or y'all tell me if you're thinking of anything? Because that is the voter tabulations, and again, this is our depiction, waiting on the updated VTD maps.
And the reason we have a 4, 48, 4B is due to population, right?
Correct. Correct. And we also had the issue of, of two of our justices living so close to each other.
Is it one reason we have the type of 4 is because it was, 30 long, it's a separate two stations, so that's what we were looking to talk about. So it will be the only one where our actual process is made in a line way? Is it going to be the only one where our process is made in a line way?
Well, in Malakoff.
Well, in Trinidad.
Getting inside of the, oh, inside of the, yeah.
That is what the overall justice maps would depict.
So there's no prohibition on JP districts crossing state house districts?
Not state house districts. As long as they, it was just the voter tabul, the voter tabulation districts crossing over. And given that we have an odd number of more than four justice courts, the voter tabulation districts drive the boundaries of the justice courts. That is, again, there's your justice courts.
And Antioch is in part of that, that sliver that we dropped from 3 down to 4, right?
Correct.
And that's going to be the new northern border of Moore Station, so it maintains the demographics.
Yes.
Antioch is right there.
We want to maintain our boxes.
Yeah, I think the Antioch area, we moved it in, yeah, to Moore Station, then the northern part of Pointer, Finn Castle also, and I think that increased on the demographics too. And it was a, was a different offset.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Right. It strengthened the demographics of that box.
Yeah.
And actually, that movement altogether created it to be more of a viable box with the added benefit of retaining the demographics. Now, that's everything that we have on the, the mapping. And like I said, if we have two action items that I need to get with the Mr. McGee about is moving the boundary of 3N down to matching Loop 7 against box or voter tabulation district 3.
Right.
I gotta quit saying boxes, we don't use boxes anymore.
Old habits, don't they?
They do. And then the other one is the combination of what we had proposed previously of 1 and 1E combining those into 1. Okay?
So, so net will be going from 27 VTDs to 30?
To 30. And quite honestly, as the population continues to expand, and I'm sure in urban counties, with that 5,000 population being the limit, they've just got tabulation districts on top of them, tabulation districts.
Looking Dallas County.
The previous two times, because in 2001, we did not have to create any. In 199, in 1991, that was when they had originally split Gun Barrel City. Gun Barrel used to be 1, and after the, in the 1991, they split it. And then rolling into... We didn't have to split any in 2001. We actually did a combination. That was when we moved Finn Castle, Finn Castle into Pointer. And then in 2011, we had to create Pain Springs South. I think that's right. So voter tabulation districts, when we were a smaller population, were not really a lot of a discussion. They were a discussion because, again, they were boxes, precincts, where you had to vote at that location. With the advancement and the opportunity for us to move into a elections centers, you can vote anywhere in the county on election day. So it kind of releases you from having all of those polling places in each and every one of these. So.
Well, that's an opportunity to discuss about improving access, but reducing the number of election workers we need on election day.
Right.
And I think it states in the law that they have to be.
Is this not maybe a little bit time for that discussion, but we would like to have that discussion?
I think it, if, if there's not really much more discussion on this, be happy to go into that because it is a part of this evaluation process. Commissioner, you were.
Yeah, I think I was reading that a voting box has to be within no more than 25 miles away, is what I read, 25 miles. So there's plenty of them around.
Right. They need to be within 25 miles of one another?
Yeah. Mark, it's 25, you shouldn't have to drive any more than 25 miles from your, from a, within your location to, to a voting vote.
Okay.
No.
No, I don't either.
I think we're well within 25 miles, almost everywhere in the county to what we're thinking about, yeah.
Now, when we did the consolidation, when we instituted the vote center, how many polling places did that take us down to, Paula? Do you?
23.
23 is what we've had. Because at one time, and I'll go back, we used to have 31 boxes, polling locations. When we went to the vote center, we were able to consolidate down to 23 locations. Now, somewhere in the law, there is a limit as to how far you can go down within a certain timeframe. Do you know off the top of your head? Because I believe.
The largest have to be, or have the smallest in each commissioner?
Right. I knew, you can never have, you can only have half as many in the smallest as you do in the largest. But for some reason, I believe, if I remember right, 14 was as low as we could go within a certain timeframe, because you could only reduce by percentages. You had one year you could reduce so much, and then the next round you could reduce so much more in it. We need to really look into this because if 14 is our bottom, which I hope it's not.
I'm at 18 right now.
You're at 18.
Maybe 19, I'm not, I haven't made one that.
So you, you have been looking at this also?
We did. Setting up a bit.
There's, and there's a lot of things you got to consider. You got to consider the election administrator time, setting up, paying the place, if we're using the place we got to pay for, finding the election workers, extra equipment, you know? But also, you don't want to, again, you don't want to make somebody go up too far either, so.
So we're reducing this time by 2, aren't we? 2 voting places?
Actually, no, we, remember, we.
Increased by 30.
We increased districts.
Districts, but our voting sites.
But our voting sites are still at 23 at this point until the court decides to move further in that consolidation process. And again, that is a helpful, a helpful action when, in this day and age, when you, when it is so difficult to find individuals that will be working the polls. And even, if you look at our, our workforce out in the private sector today, it's hard to find people there. When you're looking at these individuals that are working for very low pay and doing it more out of civic duty, and the, the demographic of these individuals, when you look at the demographic of the individuals that come in, they can have issues that are very important that may knock them out of being able to be there today. I'm trying to say it very nicely, there's some individuals that are the.
Experienced.
Experienced age group. That may have, that have things come up rather quickly that then causes the shuffle, and when you already have a, a thin bench to draw from, it becomes even that much more difficult. So.
It'd be great if election day was a holiday. It would allow, it would allow us to find volunteers, I know we're, they use so much of the, of, of, of course, of course, I know this is a subject, is challenging, but, you know, it would, it would alleviate a lot of problems.
Well, in the discussion here, I'd like to hear from the court, members of the court, you hear the discussion we're having with the, the party chairs, thoughts of the court of continuing, continuing the consolidation of vote centers?
I think it's something we need to look at. I mean, we looked at it two years ago and reduced it by a few, like probably five, I think we had 28, and we've got 23 now.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we reduced it by four or five back then, but I think it's something we need to relook at and with the help of the party chairs, be able to come up with something. Because like you said, it's harder and harder to get people to feel no position to work the polling places.
I, you know, as Commissioner McCam said, two years ago, we tried to combine Gun Barrel and South and Gun Barrel North to one location. I'm just. I'm just trying to figure out if one of those places that it is now, whether it be Gun Barrel City Hall or Lutheran Church.
The Lutheran Church.
Would, would those people be able, I mean, is there enough room there to add that many voting boxes?
That's what concerns me about that one. I had it combined at City Hall, but I don't think there's enough room at City Hall to, if it rained, there's no way that they could...
I agree, I agree with both locations would be challenged, but there is a possible new location, which would be Legends.
Which is further down the road the other way.
Where is that?
Yes, it's the new civic, uh, city, uh, Gun Barrel City. It's called Legends. It's, it's just about a half mile east of City Hall on the south side.
I'm concerned.
CR Legacy?
Yeah.
Well, I would be concerned about what the cost would be to rent that that day.
Yeah, I realize there is, and it's a private center.
I think it needs to be further down the other way to a state headquarters. I think this will be a real large location. Because we're getting closer to Seven Points going that way.
Well, and also, the, then you drive the people that are, that are gonna be in 2:00 M, they're gonna be driving further, as you said, towards Seven Points to go to that CR Legacy.
Good.
City Hall was a basic location.
Do we have a contact with Maybank ISD, maybe with the school?
Somebody's thankful.
Well, that's way north.
It is, it is. Well, no, that...
Well, the, I'm just trying to figure out about, I mean, they already have a parking issue with the, with the school there.
Do that.
During the day for teachers, just teachers.
Right.
And I don't see, it'd be a...
It would be difficult.
I mean, Broner Hall would be great, but I don't think that you're gonna have ADA, there's not enough concrete out there. I mean, that's where they used to vote at, but I don't think that with ADA now that there'll be that much, that might not meet the standards. And plus, there's no telling what, they probably haven't done any cleaning or anything in there. The only other place I would think of would be, I'll tell you what might be a great place would, would be First Baptist Church, Gun Barrel. They have a gymnasium. That would probably be my first.
Is that the hospital on the north side?
Say it again?
Is it on the north side?
It'd be on the north side of the road.
Is that by the police station or something?
Uh, no.
No, it's close to, it closes.
It'd cross the street from Pizza Hut. It'll be right across, almost right across the street from the Lutheran Church or Diacko. And they would have, they have plenty of parking there.
Do I remember right, you talked about last meeting, something about moving the Chandler box to the bigger church there on 31?
That we, we have discussed that, and that was one thing I was going to...
Something we just need to visit with the charge administration about.
That's okay. I would know if you'd done it, or are we still talking about it?
I've already talked to Gun Barrel, or to Seven Points, we're good for March there. We're good for the Texan for March.
Okay.
My next one was there.
Was finding Chandler. Before we move any further in that, that process of the discussion, as far as action by Commissioners Court, do we have a deadline as to when we need to have these polling locations identified for the March primary?
For me, I would like them by the end of this month, because I have programming. I'm gonna have everything programmed before Christmas.
Okay.
Because we start February 14th.
You gotta get, you gotta...
For early voting, so.
You gotta get election orders out and everything.
I need to have all my data back and everything the week after Christmas, so I need to send that off before Christmas.
Okay.
So I need to know those locations before the end of this month.
Thirty days in November, right? Yeah, 30 days in November. So November 30th, you would really like for us to have something nailed down?
November 15th.
Start calling you the, gonna start calling you the Secretary of State, no.
I'm just trying to, I don't wanna be stuck with holidays and everything else, because November 14th is gonna be back, and we're gonna have.
Well, engaging First Baptist at Gun Barrel, us engaging the Chandler Methodist, United Methodist at Chandler. What other...
Well, you would, what you're talking about, us coming back and, and combining these?
Yes.
Before the election?
Yes.
Because I believe there's a process where you have to file with the Secretary of State.
You do.
We have to do it.
Yeah, there's, there's, so there, there's that time might be involved as well.
That is the reason why I had asked Ms. Lucky about timing.
The only thing that I would think of that could be at First Baptist Gun Barrel, and I believe that center that's over there to the left where the gym is, because I don't know if the daycare, if they feed daycare there or they feed daycare over at the other end of the church, that would be the only. But would it be just for one day?
The selection day. So we'll have early voting in the summer.
I think they could.
Police station would have a community room?
There is a, kinda like a community room, but it's probably no bigger than what this is, and the parking is not good. Well, I, I would say the parking's not good. They have parking around two sides, and then they have a bigger parking lot, but if it's raining, it's kind of an inconvenience because they'd have to walk in front of the fire station doors. So that would cause a, not health issue, but a safety issue in case they did catch a call.
Now, there's another location that we have and that we have used polling in one or two elections so far, and that is the new La Rue complex. And we, we have, there were tentative discussions about adding it as an additional early voting site. And the reason that I bring it up is that prior to the last two elections, it was very, very evident that the voting method of choice was exercised through early voting. That percentage of individuals that were voting early were continuing to grow. Now, two election cycles, two ago, we added, added the, oh, no, excuse me, in 2020, we added the Texan into the mix. And it was amazing, even during the pandemic, how many election day voters that we saw come through during that. And I know the politics or so forth was high and involved, and everyone was out wanting to vote, but that was the highest election day voting. And when you look at the Texan in particular, it drew people, because we're a vote center, from other locations, because folks wanted to come see the Texan. You know, many of us grew up, you know, went to movies at that location and hadn't been in it since it had closed. So is this the time that we want to look in, Paula, your input is gonna be very important to this, about adding the La Rue as an early voting site into with our others?
I don't think, I mean, I can do that, but the Texan, even last Tuesday, they were lined up the door, and I had to set up another check-in station. I mean, 646 people showed up, and I didn't have over a thousand some for early voting.
On election days, whenever one showed up?
Yes, election day.
Okay.
And I walked in and I was like...
Showed, arrived.
Where do these people come from? So everybody loves the Texan. I mean, we just love that location. But an alternative is the King Center. I mean, that may, we could combine, get rid of the Rock, combine.
But before we, like I said, I put the La Rue portion out in discussion, do we, is it something that you see is needed this round or wanted or...
Well, there's a change in law back in September 1st, that you can have part-time voting locations. So we could open it up for a week and see how it goes the week before.
You can have part-time, early voting locations?
Yes, because that come up when I was trying to do, I was trying to open Orm White for half a week for that district 10.
Right.
And that's...
Well, now, that seems crazy. And the reason I say this is because just two or four years ago, they ended up passing a law stopping much of the, what would be considered specific issue voting, school bonds, you know, when you could have a mobile voting on one night at a football game. You can't do that anymore.
It has to be a designated.
No, but you see what I'm saying.
But that crossed my mind the other day about La Rue. I don't know if that would be, I have to do some more research into it, but they did.
That was done for a long election, I remember.
Yes, I know.
Because I was gonna open Orm White for three days during early voting to give them an extra opportunity to read it, because it was before September 1st.
But even if, even if that's not, if we can't do that, is it feasible to put La Rue side as an early voting site?
I mean, I look at my equipment out there. I mean, it's not hard.
You're not gonna hurt our feelings, yes or no?
It's just paying the workers to be out there. This is gonna be the problem.
But is it viable?
Then you have one at La Rue, Chandler, Athens, and...
Seven Points.
This last one, in Orlando, I should. 265 for early voting for two weeks, 265.
What was their election day turnout?
About 431.
Is that the event, election?
So you had 431 on election day at Chandler, and how much early voting?
265.
Huh. Well, we also know that those that vote in constitutional elections are those that, if you're, if the doors are open to vote, they're gonna show up. And they are the ones, am I overreaching with this? If I had to, when I look at what I stereotypically believe that individual is, they are election day voters. Is it, I don't know if anyone...
That was really into it.
Yeah, and, and I'm going, yeah.
The important, exactly, the informal electorate. Exactly. I didn't say that. Say what?
The... Okay. Court thoughts? I mean, we're just working through election political boundary issues.
But the challenge we have from the parties, having the workers during that two-week period, all right? But at the same time, it does open up convenience for all the constituents on that side of the county, from having to drive either into, into Athens or up to Chandler.
What it would also do is give us, give us an opportunity to get some numbers. If we want to leave that as an early voting position and close down, you know, some other boxes or voter...
Like this is gonna be low voting government next time, so I think it'll be more...
Yeah, we'd be able to get some numbers, and that's, that's what we, that's why we only did five last time, because we wanted some real-time numbers. And then, you know, we kinda, everything kinda got started up, mixed around, so we didn't get those numbers. And, so we still don't have those numbers, and this would be a good way to, to be able to get some numbers to see if we need to close any or keep them open.
And when we went to the vote center model, you know, just my immediate thoughts were you have five locations that would be quote-unquote your early voting locations, one in each corner and one in Athens. And then you fill in on election day those few others, and that way you would be able to offer that opportunity to all quarters of the county and maybe really have a more efficient process. Where we're, we're down to, if you've got the corners and the center covered, you know, then you, you know, use this Gun Barrel, Brownsborough, Murchison, drop down, you've got La Pointer, Coffee City, uh, La Pointer, Pointer, New York La Rue, Coffee City, yeah, and as you work your way out like that. But I said that was when we first started this.
I, I do agree with you that I think early voting is gonna continue to grow. The numbers there will get higher, and then, you know, it's gonna go down in percentage ones.
Well, it was tracking like that for election after election, and then it flipped.
Well, yeah. But that was a big election, so.
Yes.
It was a very unique election, so.
Yes.
I think it's gonna go back to that, that drive.
Okay. Ms. Lucky, with everything else you've got going on, is this something that you really want to?
Yes, because it was, it was busy, sitting all alone. I mean, I have kind of a love of community centers because I can get in there a little easier for the churches, or kind of with their schedule. So I was stuck Monday, early voting, you know, but...
And Paula, that'll be one less place you gotta set up to not improve the election day.
Yeah, I wanna set way more up on Friday than I do on Monday. And I think we're gonna combine Berryville and Coffee City anyways, so Berryville's combined, and that's with this plan. So that's one, one bad plan.
Well, I think with us working in conjunction with the redistricting, if you can finalize that development and with the party chairs, bring to us so that we can begin to get it addressed in time, Court.
I think the most of the proposals are similar.
Okay.
I mean, I do 23, I'm not, you know, house source and resource.
Well, that 23 was our initial move two years ago, and we were going to make another move. And of course, we've had, you know, you just coming into the position recently, Ms. Hernandez leaving, you know, we, we have a lot going on, so I really would like for us, if you could, get that proposal put forward so that we could take that next step in fully implementing the election center. So, okay. Court, anything else with political boundaries and elections? Sir? Would, would you like to say anything?
I'm taking a roll in, Marty.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments concerning the maps, I would like to recap what we've discussed, so y'all can hold me accountable. We discussed, again, adjusting the line between box three and box three N, so that three N comes down to the loop, which conforms with the statehouse districts. Also, the consolidation of what we, the proposal that we had was of the creation of box one and one E, but combining those into one and designating it box one, that will be a viable box of 1,624 individuals. And then as a part of the plan development, as we've just discussed, reaching out to First Baptist Gun Barrel and United Methodist Chandler. What else? That's kind of a recap of what I feel our discussions have been. Now, again, our attorneys with Allison and Bass, Mr. McGee, will be getting us the final shape files, which will have not only what I just discussed here of the box three, three N, and one and one E. which will have not only what I just discussed here of the Box Three, Three N, and One, and One E, but also with a correction to the shape files properly depicting what we had discussed with the Four MS box and the Four NY LP of those two with the merging of Four PF. Those are really the only outstanding issues that I have. Does anybody have anything else?
The only one thing I think I'm bringing up is Four NY LP. Do we really want it to be that long? Do not want, if it's, like, La Rue is kind of the center of it. Do you not want to call it La Rue or LP? Well, not K color LP, you got it.
I would.
Instead of Four NY LP?
I'll defer to the Commissioner of that area.
No matter, just always, you know, it's, uh, combining all those together, just trying to leave their names in for the New York community and what we call the La Pointe community, you know, it's all together. So that's what we call it for, New York La Pointe is, is where I've kinda got it initially.
Right.
So just keep.
For the historic perspective of.
Yeah, more than anything. We've left Fincastle out and it's always been in there for years, you know, the F for Fincastle, but, uh.
A lot of history there. Can you get five digits on your registration card? Is that box big enough?
Fourth, then.
Are, are, are you bringing a legitimate?
That's kind of a legitimate question.
Yeah.
I.
Is that, is that box big enough to write that on? How do you bring that with you?
I think I like more characters. But I won't.
We can drop the P off and just call it New York La Rue.
Trying to find the speaker button, sorry. I was trying to get a phone number.
You got, you got two GBN and two PSS, there are four, this one's gonna be five.
Oh, you took the Y out.
NLP, Four NLP, uh, NLP.
Be all right. Take the Y out, All NLP.
You probably have some upset people if you have. Yeah.
Well, Fincastle was the oldest box in the county.
Remember getting rid of that?
Well, well, we actually got rid of it in, um.
Oh, don't get me to get rid of that.
Yes, um, I believe on Election Day they would have 12 or 15 people vote.
Wow.
Um, what really, what pushed us to combining it 20 years ago, was it?
When I first came in, I think Precinct Four had 13 voting boxes.
It did.
It had 13 boxes and four.
Precinct Four, um, I don't wanna say it was resistant, but was very much tied to their identities with the voting box locate. Those communities retained those and their identity, um, much more so than you see in other parts of the county. It was almost like gangs in some, in some way.
They think because those families has been there since the beginning.
And, and that is a very good point because the majority of that area has been the historical, um, families with not a lot of, um, influx, so. Okay, now I'll put, if Commissioner, you're good with Four NLP, is that designation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'll put that as a third action item for me to, um, discuss with, uh, Mr. McGee and get, get that corrected. Okay. What else?
Do we have any precincts that require Spanish translators or speakers? I know that we have one in, uh, Pink Springs before. I'm just wondering how the demographics are gonna be, if there has to be a translator required at the, during voting.
I'm not sure how the, what the trigger point is in the law about that. I will ask Mr. McGee about that as well.
Yeah, with the numbers changing the way they are, it'd be better to be ahead of it than behind.
Yes.
Paula, do they not have a?
We have a post. Yes.
But isn't there a phone thing that they can, you can get a translator on the phone there?
Yes, I have a post with a phone number. Our office has two.
I thought it was, yeah, I thought there was some way to, or any.
All the machines are programmed for English and Spanish.
Yeah, you choose at the beginning.
And if they wanna write to them, it will read them to them in English and Spanish.
Okay.
That just needs, you know, I mean, I, maybe it's just the communication needs to be improved a little bit during, during voting.
It is something I will ask him, ask him about, of any, um, requirements that we may not have covered. Okay. All right, well. If there's no further discussion, considering item one, our item two is to take action to set a public hearing regarding these proposed changes to the Henderson County political boundaries. And again, due to the compressed timelines and everything, we, um, we were able to get set for 10 o'clock Friday, Friday morning at 10:00 AM. And this would be where we present for public discussion, um, their input, um, as to what thoughts are about what we have done. Like I said, the, um, we each, we've got maps here for folks to take with you, uh, the Commissioners, um, party chairs. Paula, please take one of these maps with you. We have more of the Commissioner precincts. Once we get the corrected and with these changes, voter tabulations districts in, we will produce those in the same fashion. And of course, we will get them sent to you electronically as well, just soon as we get them in, but that way you'll be able to see and please look over them, any, anything that we need to correct that we may have missed or as we have found out during this process, not all the shape files get sent as they should, which, as I was talking to Paula about earlier, now makes a whole lot more reasonable why JP Six was lost 20 years ago, so. But of course, we don't want that. We want to have a, um, a good set of maps and the more eyes look at it, the better off we are. Do what? We, Paula was essential in finding out that mistake all those years ago. So, thank you, Paula.
It was the fair count, so.
Either way, item two is, um, as I said, we need to set a public hearing and please, may I suggest to the Court, uh, February, February? November, November 12th, which is this Friday at 10:00 AM.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, set a public hearing for Friday, November the 12th, 2021 at 10:00 AM.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCann, to set a public hearing at 9:00 AM, Novem, sorry, 10:00 AM, November the 12th, which is this Friday, um, regarding the proposed changes to the Henderson County boundaries. Any further discussion? Again, thank you all for being here. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Item passes. Item number three is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, second by Commissioner Stivey to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you very much.